Slow it down a little bit.
I hope so. I just checked the radar and it doesn't look like it's gonna let up till like ten o'clock. Said he just talked to Ed and he said Yellow Moose is closed down.
Oh, yeah.
And she said St. Rose is probably.
Trying to try to think, missing just to see how high it was, but that was crazy.
Really?
Yep. That was pretty. Try to think, missing just to see how high it was, but that was crazy.
Really?
Yep. That was pretty. Swar.
Yeah.
That's always pretty quick.
We got some decent flooding out there now. We have a copy of the motions list.
Well, let's go through this. You will.
I got, and thank you for that little post note too, by the way. How are you doing?
I'm good. How are you doing, John?
How was your trip? I mean, did you camp at the app?
Me? Awesome.
Is that where you were?
Yeah.
Where at?
In, um, to Katie National Park and then I'll be back down.
That's awesome.
Been made that multiple times, never been to a K D though, so that was.
I, uh, that's great.
Experience.
That is on my bucket list.
It's a good bucket list to have. I mean, it's really, it's a really beautiful national park. It's only one piece of the Mississippi, so it's well worth the trip. Very proud of that.
Yeah. Were you camping up there or did you?
We stayed in the hotel.
Okay.
Yeah. We tried to stay in the KOA there, but they were already booked out. Got there just, I started from the just insurance society. One thing that having people mask outdoors at parks.
That's just insane.
It is. That's. That's what it is. It's not insane.
Good morning.
Good.
Good evening. How are you?
How are you? Safe for stormwater management.
Yes.
Get to see what basis is working, what happens.
Get to see what storm base is working.
Different areas. For the rain. I have one of my clients who can figure out where some stormwater was going, so he's out there today. Next we're going around taking pictures for me. I think he's actually having fun. Not finished, so we're stressing about that. We had time to get it repaired. To Lee High, so they didn't really get much as we got here. We got a couple inches to go. We're gonna try and run expedited meetings tonight. Which may. Cause I want to never be out here by here clocking very late. That's people driving most of them.
Yeah.
That daylight left. Yep. I will do whatever I can to help you do that. I appreciate that.
Is that you?
How are you doing that, you know, this nice dry weather bank? Yes, all the usual roads are already flooded at this point. Now we're starting to get one or two that were probably stormy floods that are flooding up.
Did Cindy tell you Yellow Goose is closed?
Yeah, that's one in the world.
And it's ready to break over at State Road in Culver.
We'll find out about that one. It's, uh.
And I looked down in the meadows as I tried to use Yellow Goose and it was way out.
Yeah.
It is way out.
Yeah.
Where it all goes flooding area.
It was not. The, the lower Church Street road in Culver is about to flood over. It's not Cindy that has already up against the edge of the curb line.
State Road looks good. State Road's not even close.
It's ready to break.
Yeah, it's getting there, but the old one would have been like way over the top.
I understand that.
Yeah. But it's all behind us still.
We got about three hours of rising.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but the, uh, the Culver down by the school district is about to be over top now. And that one hasn't flooded since tropical storm wind.
Wow.
Bum and Grove was still open too when I drove by, which I'm surprised with that one, because that one's actually closed even after the improvements. I mean, the Culver we put in is a big improvement. It used to close every single heavy rain, but now that one actually is not surprised that it's still open. They used to have. A sort of. Ah.
Hey, John. I am expediting the meeting, so if you don't mind me asking, what topic are you here about something to talk about?
After the street.
Okay. Appreciate that. Are you wanting to rock around or playing chance?
Yes.
Okay. Nice meeting. Your goal is to try and get everybody out of me than why you thought or so. We got roads closing now, so we're gonna get people to project. Yeah, come, actually come close if you don't mind, because that way we stop talking on microphone. Do sign in if you're gonna speak.
Mr. and Mrs. Gonzalez.
Hi, great.
They entered out for rain.
Yeah, amazing.
I'm just sliding down. I'm pretty sure everybody in the meeting, nice vaccine.
According to Chief, about fourteen roads are closed. And they're out of barricades.
They're out of barricades.
Like you were gonna talk about independence.
What, why other ones are closed, did he say?
He didn't, but he has come to the meeting, so you can ask him. Word's down and said an officer is sitting there because of no barricades.
Well, if Church Street closes in this whole district location, that's gonna be a big flood. Cause that's gonna affect, perhaps, Melvin's meeting. For the vacation of Catherine Street hearings, to hear comments related to the vacation of Catherine Street adoption consideration ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash oh six. Vacate fifty percent of the street right away to each abiding property owner. And so with that, I will turn this over to our township solicitor who is present on Zoom.
Okay, good evening. So you have before you a proposed ordinance for the vacation of a portion of Catherine Street. What I would recommend you do is begin by having either township staff or the township engineer provide some background as to the circumstances that led to this ordinance and what's being proposed. You then should open it up for public comment. At the end of the hearing, you will have an opportunity to decide whether you wish to move forward with adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. So I think we'll start off with town staff comments, Ms. Switzer.
So one of the property owners, there's two property owners involved, and one of the property owners reached out and said, hey, what can we do? We would like to use the side yard of, of our property. So I investigated it, talked to the neighbors on the other side, and actually went forward and talked to the Public Works Department, Public Works Group. They said move forward, so we moved forward. We had the property surveyed by DMA. Plans, I believe you have copies of them. And then I get, went back out, talked to each of the neighbors, explained to them what was going to occur. They were a bit confused or uneasy about the stakes in the yard. I think we solved that with Scott Hane and I went out and talked to them. The last I spoke to them, both were in agreement to move forward and would support the, the vacating of the roadway. Piece of ground between on Catherine Street that's unimproved between the rail line and, um, I don't know, it goes back maybe a couple, I don't know how many feet back. Seventy-five feet. Yeah, so it's not a huge piece of ground. But it's being separated in half down the middle. Half will be owned by one property owner, half by the other. I think John is pulling up the print now. Glad to see your eyesight's not good either.
Okay, we're just working through a technical issue right now. Are we gonna be able to pull the plan up or? Okay. Mr. Hane, do you have anything to offer or add?
Pretty straightforward survey.
Okay.
Okay. And full disclosure, when we advertised this, there was a, at that public meeting, just a very brief discussion about the, what was going on behind with this project and this plan was originally. So everybody can see it at this point. Any questions to the board before we open up the public comment?
So it was. It was staked and both residents viewed the layout, right? Okay.
Yeah, we actually, it was staked out and we met personally with both of the residents to explain what the stakes were. One of the, the, one of the property lines is very close to the house, not the Mr. and Mrs. Gonzalez who are in the audience, but the other property is very close to the house. And, and so, of course, they had some concerns about that.
You can see the houses on the property line pretty much. Now this would actually improve things by taking part of the house off the property line, so that I could see it's a positive. Mr. Bennett?
How large a track of land is it?
Each piece is about two thousand square feet.
They'll, they'll get approximately the same amount.
Correct. The one is, the one piece that the starters get is one thousand nine hundred fifty-three, the other is one thousand nine hundred sixteen. Right. And the only reason it's different is because the railroad track is on a radius, so the lot gets slightly shorter on the, on the Gonzalez, on the Gonzalez side.
When we abandon the road, the wall, it's called the, it's, it literally goes down the middle of the roadway right away. So you, you can have a little variation on, on what the areas are because the line has to go down the middle of the road.
Thank you.
Will there be monument set or some designation as to the property line that might guide, say, snow removal efforts or anything else that might come to the end of the township line and the? Yes.
Yes, we, we spoke, I spoke with Ms. Switzer about putting concrete monuments in at the corners, so it's very clear where, where those points are. Right now, the asphalt, I don't know if I can, if I can point with this here. The asphalt ends right where the line's being drawn, so it's, it's pretty clear. This is the end of the, the cartway. This area is just grass and trees.
Okay.
On, on, on both sides, so it's, it's clear now and, and Public Works already just delineates to that point as far as their maintenance goes. Any other just questions to the board? Okay, we will open this up to public comment. If you wish to add anything at this point, you don't have to if you don't have anything to add. Do you have to speak into the microphone now because of Zoom?
Um, no, I just, um, like you guys were saying, um, you know, we saw the stakes and all that. We honestly, we didn't know what was going on until we got the letter and then, um, when, um, I think my wife called Cindy, she came down with, um, with him, um, I forgot your name, Scott, and they came down and they explained, you know, what was going on and, um, everything went well, you know, they were very kind, they explained everything and, um, and now we're here, you know, and I just wanted to thank you for taking your time. You know, to, you know, with all the phone calls that you received and all, and we appreciate your help and, and paid everything you, you know, you told us about the boundaries and all that, and thank you very much.
And just for Zoom, could you just state your name and?
My name, my name is Kenneth Gonzalez, seven twenty-two Catherine Street.
Awesome.
And, uh, my wife is Teresa.
Nice to meet you. We like, we like happy satisfied customers, so thank you.
You can. You can just lay that on the table.
Just, you could just, yeah, lay it down on the table or, yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Okay, so any more discussions of the board? So looking back at our solicitor, we obviously just got done the public comment part, and I'm not seeing any other public comments. There's no more comments to the board. So as of my understanding, as we would close the hearing unless she speaks up otherwise, and then we'd have the decision whether we take action on it or not at this point.
That is correct.
Okay, so with that confirmation, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Sure.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have it five, nothing. And now I will, what's the will of the board? The motion, I'll read it out, is to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash oh six approving the vacation of a portion of Catherine Street to Harry J Garner Senior and Kenneth and Teresa Gonzalez. So that is the motion.
So move.
Okay, motion for Mr. LaFever, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Bennett, or Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver. Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have it, five, nothing. Thank you. You're welcome to stay, but I would kind of encourage you if you don't have anything else, it'd probably be good to go at this point, so.
Drive safe.
Yes.
So Susan, before we, we move on to the next subject, while the Gonzalez's are here, the next process would be for them to sign the, the quick claim deed, or how does that?
Yeah, so if, if everyone's in agreement with both sides, we can move forward with that. Have we heard anything from the other property owner?
I have not, no, not in regard to the letter.
So then the next step would be we would file this ordinance with the court. Um, there's a thirty day period for anyone to file exceptions to the ordinance. If there's no exceptions filed, then we can move forward with preparing the deeds and, and having those signed and recorded.
Okay.
And we will get the documents to them when, is there right here?
Yes.
But when are we gonna do that?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, after the thirty day notice.
Thirty day period.
Yeah, so probably second week in October, I would guess.
So, or if the third week of October comes and you don't see anything, give a call into us, so. Thank you. Okay, our next agenda item is actually, as we've been doing lately, in addition to the agenda for something that had not been previously advertised to follow the new guidelines from the state. So with that, we have on the agenda declarations of emergency. Now, open up to the manager real quick.
So the governor kind of preauthorized his declaration for the state, so we figured we would follow suit just in case. So that's what you have before you, and I would like to add that to the agenda.
Okay, any discussion of the board? I'll entertain a motion to add this to the agenda.
So move.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have it five, nothing.
Thank you.
So we add that to the agenda. Next up, we has a consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to approve routine items of very, they have very little debate or discussion, so with that, open up the floor to consent agenda. Any comments to the board?
Not here.
Okay, any comments from the public? I'm seeing none. I'll entertain a motion to adopt a consent agenda.
So move.
Motion for Mr. Wigglesworth and the second is Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Uh, Mr. Russell, if, uh, you're aware of the. Okay. Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
No abstain for a conflict of interest. So with that, uh, we will move on to our action items. And the first item we have is the conditional use of special exceptions, any text amendment, acknowledgement and authorization to send to the East Hamfield Plant Commission, Lancaster County Plant Commission, and advertise for adoption consideration. We have a request from staff to table, uh, so I'll entertain a motion to table at this time.
So move.
Okay, motion for Mr. Wigglesworth, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Bennett. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have it five, nothing. Now, Ms. Switzer, we will see this at when at this point?
We are hoping to see this at the next meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay.
The plan again now will be the fifteenth, we will get a, will still be a draft copy.
Yes.
And we will have till the next meeting, then first meeting in October, before we need to take action. Is that not correct?
You don't need to take action at all. The, the next action for the board would be to acknowledge the fact that there is an ordinance and to pass it to the planning commissions for review.
And that's what I'm saying. We could do that the first meeting in October.
You could.
John shaking his head, no.
Why not?
Are you asking to delay it till the first meeting in October to acknowledge it or to act on the ordinance, Mr.?
Act on forwarding it.
We could, yes, we could.
I just, I just think I'd feel comfortable seeing what we have. I'd like it to go forward with the full support of the board. If there's anything that we can't feel is uni- unanimity, then we could hash it out.
So I could, I could add it to the board's agenda on the fifteenth for discussion?
This is the, this is the conditional use.
Yes.
Ordinance.
Yep, and Mr. LaFever, there were no comments from the planning group at the meeting when we presented it to them. It was, um, when the ordinance was drafted, there were some questions between staff and the engineer and the, and the solicitor that just needed to be hashed out regarding that draft, so as, as long as as you're aware of that, that issue.
It's, it's a very important document. We've been working and waiting for a good long time and, um, I, I just would feel more comfortable being able to dig into it and understand.
I don't have any problem with that. I just, anything I would caution is the one, it's not the sign ordinance we're talking about and, but we, we also want, don't, usually for the advertising period, you don't go into too great a detail unless there's a poison pill in that ordinance. You got the, the, kind of the processes that goes to Plan Commission, they comment, and board member can go to the Plan Commission and offer feedback in that process, but I'm just, just throwing it out there. That's not, because otherwise that kind, from a perspective of, we kind of advertised already to the Plan Commission and the public before they've actually had a chance to even look at it, it's kind of short circuiting the system a little bit. So if there's, if there's not a poison pill and there is something that you are absolutely firmly against, then I would just caution about keeping the comments at the high level and not going into the weeds, because that's really what the Plan Commission review at that point's for. And then, like I said, any board member can go to the Plan Commission to offer comment to, and then we obviously ourselves have it before us, where we can't go into the weeds after the Plan Commission goes through it, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I inquire as to what the issue, was there a major issue here?
There was, it was the email that Ms. Switzer had sent to all of us earlier today that there was just some technical issues.
No, no, I'm okay, I'm okay with that, but could, could, could you? No, no, I'm okay, I'm okay with that, but could, could, could you maybe, it would be good to explain what the issues are. I mean, this, this seemed like this was something that was ready to go.
That's, okay.
Mr. Bennett, it is ready to go. I think there was some communication issues between staff, Ms. Pfeifer and the engineer. We're just trying to hash those out to make sure that we have all of the bases covered and answered any questions that were brought up during discussions with the planning group and during our staff, in-house staff meetings. There was no real disagreement or issues, it's just some minor typographical issues.
Just typographical?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm in favor. We're just, we'll see, and when will you actually send this out to us to look at? That would be the next question is when will we see it?
We should have a copy out by the end of next week. It should be, everything should be hashed out by the end of next week.
So we would see it in 10 days and that would be four days or so before our next meeting?
Yes.
That's the fifth.
Yeah, we were working towards getting it on the agenda for the 15th. So that would be, that's right in line with our timeline. So it's, if you gentlemen want to wait till the first meeting in October, that's, that's your prerogative.
For me.
Okay.
So you want it on the 15th or the first meeting?
Well, I think John just said he's going to have it finished squared away by next Friday. And then we would have until Wednesday following, which would be the meeting of the 15th.
Yeah, it's not a long read, so.
Right.
It won't change significantly to what you've seen.
There's a couple things that I was promoting and I'm, they're not, they're not deal breakers necessarily, but I'd kind of like to see how we approach the different zones and how we can maybe make it palatable to different factions and things, and so, yeah. Good.
Okay. So we'll move on to our next item, which is 71 East Bramble Boulevard requests to allow installation of a 28-foot wide driveway. Ms. Switzer or is this Mr. Madonna?
I'll let Perry handle this one.
Good evening. We had a request for a driveway that was eight foot wider than the ordinance permits. And it's currently kind of in stone and grass. And they are asking if the board would allow a 28-foot driveway. And at that point, I said, you know, I can't approve that. It must, you know, go to the board if they would like to ask for a variance for that.
So it's off, it's off an alleyway, basically.
Chestnut Street is kind of a streetish alley.
For, additionally for the board's consideration, the resident astutely also pointed out that the property that's on the north side of this alley, and Perry, I'm not sure which alley this is, they have the exact same issue and it's already paved. It's just this one is stone.
Has an impervious calculation been made for the property?
With, with the stone being a parking area, we would consider it impervious already. So there would be no additional impervious for it being paved.
There's really no on-street parking for these streets here.
So, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just wondering, it's not a variance, it's something.
Yeah, there's no, I don't think there's a variance, the driveway is more of a traffic.
No, this is, this is a township tech specs requirement. So it, it's just something that comes up before the board to allow deviation from our, our specs.
Okay. Any discussion of the board on this one?
I don't know if I'm seeing, it looks like I'm seeing a triangle with the garage on one of the legs, a grass strip on the other, and the street on the, on the base of the triangle, I believe is the term. I'm wondering if it needs to be the full triangle or if it could not have a movement into the, where the car is currently parked that would reduce it by some degree.
It's already there now, though.
It's already stone and I understand that argument, but it is a change. And when a change comes up, it can be made to be a change that's in compliance.
Well, I'm looking at how close that car is already to the alley.
I don't know that it'd be much, I just think it might be something.
I don't know how much you'd really be able to, I'll be honest with you, how you, how much you'd be able to really neck it down. It's not a long driveway. It's kind of more of an extension of parking right off the edge of the road.
To unique situation.
I'm, I'm just okay with them. I mean, there's already precedent for it elsewhere on this road. It's not, if there was on-street parking and stuff like that, that'd be one thing, but there isn't. So that means they gotta park all their cars on the, that's even bigger. They gotta park all their cars on, off, right off the edge of the shoulder of the alleyway, so. And it would probably be better in that situation having a black top than gravel. Okay, what's the will of the board?
I'm good, precedence error, I mean.
Yeah, it's not, they're not asking for anything that doesn't already exist at this point.
Improvement, it'll look, it'll look, it'll look good.
It'll look better, yeah. Okay.
No issues.
Well, no comments, then let me find the motion list here. I'll entertain a motion to authorize installation of a 28-foot wide paved driveway off East Chestnut Street for 71 Bramble Boulevard per the property owner's request.
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. Bennett, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from, we'll give Mr. Weaver this one. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have a five, nothing.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the only reason I rejected it because it was a deviation from the ordinance, so.
No, it's fine, because that's actually what you should do, so. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have our Industrial Development Authority Resolution 2021-37, extending the life of the authority to December 31, 2070. Well, we'll all be gone by that point, but. So Ms. Switzer, you want to enlighten us on the extension here?
So the, the current term of the authority is until December 31 of 2042. They have before you at a later, the next item on the agenda, a new issuance of debt. And that will extend past the life of 2042. So they need to extend the existence of the authority past that date of the debt. So the new term of the authority would be December 31 of 2070.
Okay, any discussion of the board on this one? And I see there's no one from the audience. So I'll entertain a motion to, let's get the resolution number. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2021-37, extend the life of the Industrial Development Authority to December 31, 2070. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion from Mr. LaFever, do I hear a second? Second from the chair, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have a five, nothing.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the IDA funding request for a project between New York and Lancaster YMCA's.
So the, the Industrial Development Authority was requested by the York and Lancaster YMCA to facilitate the merger of the two entities. They are going for bank financing, it's an amount not to exceed 4.8 million. They are going to retire the current debt that the authority has and reissue it into a different term. This has been before the IDA at their meeting on 23rd. Everything was approved, it's been advertised appropriately for the authority. This is just, you're taking action on authorizing signature on the documents because we already have a resolution that kind of does that. And this just reemphasizes the fact that it's occurring. So it's really a authorization of signature on the documentation by the chair.
Okay. Any discussions of this one? Now, just.
Certificate of approval.
For the record, it'll be the vice chair signing, since I'm actually a member of that YMCA too, so.
Okay. The Industrial Development Authority is an entity of East Hemphill Township. We, we appoint their board.
I still don't understand how the Lancaster and New York YMCA is involved in this. Or you're involved in this.
They're an applicant that presented a loan proposal to the Industrial Development Authority and they took action on it. The, the Industrial Development Authority does not have to maintain the boundaries of the township. They're allowed to go outside the township. Or the people are allowed to come into the township requesting funding facilitation. So no monies are really being transferred, they just use it as a facilitating tax-free bonds or bank loans.
We're in charge of that authority?
Yes, the township, it's a township authority, yes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any other discussions at this point? Okay, I see none.
I actually did have the same question, so.
What's that about?
About how that worked, so that's, I'm glad you asked it because I didn't quite get that either.
There's about three or four industrial development authorities in the whole county.
Right.
About a dozen of them in all of central Pennsylvania. And they do cross boundary lines. We could be approving something that's in Berks County or something like that. It's basically the process where entities apply for tax-free loans and bonds.
There can only, authorities can only borrow so much. So once they hit their limit for the year, then they move on to the next authority. So that's how we kind of landed with it.
So this township, many, many decades ago, created their Industrial Development Authority and on very rare occasions, we have actions like this that occur.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to acknowledge the continued exist, oh, I'm sorry, the motion, where is it here? Acknowledge. Okay, I see how it went, that's kind of weird though. So the motion to acknowledge the continued existence of Resolution 2012-16 with authorizes the vice chair or chairman to sign a certificate of approval for IDA transactions. So that's the motion and it is noted that will be signed by the vice chair because the chair has declared that he's a member of the Lancaster YMCA.
Move the motion.
Okay, got a motion from Mr. LaFever, do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Abstain. Okay, so next up, we have the Dairy Road Bridge Replacement Revised Letter of Commitment and Resolution 2021-38, committing to a recalculated 30% grant match. Ms. Switzer, I'd love to see how you're going to explain this one. I know, I know what's going, I know what's going on, so let's see you try and explain this, what's up?
So we were presented, we were contacted by the agency that's handling the grant applications for the Dairy Road Bridge Replacement. We submitted it, we submitted it based on 30% match of a $1.7 million project, which came out to 410,000, I believe, I don't have my document up here, sorry. We submitted it, we got, they reached back out to us and said, no, wait a minute, that's not how you calculate these things. So they, we went back and forth with Chris Bauer from the traffic engineer, trying to rationalize how they were thinking and we couldn't. So we're dealing with the person that reviews the grant applications. So the, the best bet for us to get this grant is to succumb and accept the fact that we have to now fund this a slightly higher than 30%. And that's where we're at. So we have to do a new resolution, a new letter that reflects the way they calculate the 30%, which we don't agree with, but you can't fight the system. The other option too, to be perfectly fair, is that we could request a waiver of the match. But that then puts us further probably down the list of projects.
And the way they do it is a circular math, normally you would take.
That's not what that is.
I don't know how else to describe it because the way this grant group is reviewing it, you're always going to be chasing the 30%. So they take what the total cost is, it's 30%, that's, and then you gotta match that 30% of the total cost. So it creates a circular math, which it's a really weird way of how they calculate, which is a way that I've never seen calculated by any other grant agency. And so you're never at 30%. And technically, they can keep coming back and say, no, you gotta keep increasing the match. So by the way, they calculate what's supposed to be a 30% match, actually becomes like a 40% match by using their fuzzy government math technique for how they calculate what 30% is of 100%. So normally you look at what the cost of a project is and you say, if it's a $1 million project, you would say 30%. So that would be $300,000 and that would be your match. And that's not how they calculate it, so. The way their math, and it's hard to even explain, but I got to see the, the grant application and the way they calculate it is not any way other than maybe way Common Core maybe nowadays figures things out because it doesn't make any sense how they're doing the math.
So we'll pay a bit more, who pays a bit less?
The state.
The state.
Less of a, less grant money is the way they come up with it.
Okay.
It just, like I said, it's just, it's a really, it's not, like I said, the million dollar example. If it was a million dollar project, we would say, okay, we're responsible 30%. A normal sane person would say, well, 30% of a million is $300,000. That's not how the math works here.
Okay.
I don't know, it's, it's, it's almost like you take, taking an Excel file and creating a circular loop. It just, it could keep going if, with the logic of the person that's doing it. So the person that's in charge is definitely not a math major, just put it that way.
Sort of a negative compound interest?
So, if we have any more on that one? Okay, so the, seeing nothing from the audience. The motion is to reissue a letter of commitment resolution of 2021-38, restating the matching funds necessary to apply for multi-mile transportation funding for the Dairy Road Bridge Replacement Project. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Okay, a motion from Mr. Bennett, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have a five, nothing.
Thank you.
Okay, keeping the project moving, we have no old business and I'm assuming there's no old business right now to discuss. And we're gonna get, we'll get that, we'll put that on our new business a moment.
Okay.
Anything else at this point? Okay, moving on to new business, we did have our additional item that we had added to there, which was the declaration of emergency. Is there any discussion of the board at this point? Ms. Chief, if we are trying to be accurate by 8 o'clock, so if you can keep it to just a couple minutes or less, could you give us an update on road closures?
Chief. I can give you a list, but it's right now, it's 12 roads that are closed, barricaded. Township's going to need to get more barricades for the next storm. I think every time we have a storm, we buy more. And right now, there's a water rescue, two people stranded in a, in a car down on McGovernville. John Cottmoyer is there with Roars, I think Rescue 23 is there and two of our officers. So as I walked out of here and came back in, they were in the process of getting up to the vehicle.
Where on McGovernville is that?
At the dip, at the apartments.
But it's not, it wasn't off there, it's off the side where the trail is, in that area down there, is that what we're talking about?
I think it was covered right there, right, right at the cross.
Oh, so they, they got stalled in the water then?
I think they're probably trying to, but we have Marietta, 741 at Knoll Church Street, at the golf course, Shriner Station Road, Dairy Road, Lee Brook Road, Yellow Goose, Nistley, Sniper Dam, Miller Quarry and Farmingdale Road, as of now, but the water's coming up. The bridge is about two feet from the new bridge on State Road. So as of right now, it's the first time we've had heavy rain where the water didn't go over the road. If it continues to rain, it probably is going to go over that road too.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion of the board? Okay, so we do have the emergency declaration. So it is Resolution 2021-39 of East Hemphill Township, Lancaster County, a declaration of disaster emergency for tonight's rain events. So do I hear a motion? Okay, a motion from Mr. LaFever, second from Mr. Wigglesworth, Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever. Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes have a five, nothing. Okay, I guess we have manager's report next.
Gosh, that was quick. So. Centerville Road South. We're still plugging away. I just looked at the STANTEC list, and we maybe have four properties that we're still need, they're outstanding, but they're working towards settlement. The Church Street paving project, we had a meeting today, yesterday, with the school district to talk to them about the split in construction years. They are fine with it. They would prefer to have the infringement on the end of the school year, their end of school year. So there might be a little bit of overlap there for their, their may dismissal, their may, may timeframe. The next project, next thing on that one is a discussion next week with the water and sewer groups to make sure that that coordination happens, because that's crucial to getting the culvert in and in place in time. So they're still looking at a split construction timeframe for that, starting, letting the project in January of '22, doing some, some light work during '22, and then the heavy lifting will be in '23. No additional information on Old Warriors Town Road. Farmingdale, we're still plugging along there, waiting for those grant documents to get signed. State Road looks in really good shape in terms of striping. They corrected the, the problem that existed two weeks ago. We talked about the Dairy Road Bridge.
For State Road, we've gotten a lot of good comments from residents about people, especially the commute there are happy. And then I tell them that Centerville Road's about to kick off, and all that traffic for Centerville is going to go to State Road and burst their bubble.
Yeah, well, progress. The 2020 audit is completed. It's been distributed to the board supervisors as well as elected auditors. We are having a meeting tomorrow with the admin finance to talk about the ARPA money, the American Relief Plan money. I did have, well, we did have a group, planning group meeting on the 25th. We discussed the conditional use and the special exception ordinance that you talked about tonight, as well as the sign ordinance, drafts, and timelines. The, let's see. They're moving at a different pace. The conditional use, special exception, of course, will be hopefully at your agenda meeting on the 15th, and then sign ordinance will follow slightly after that timeframe. We also talked about a potential development interest at the corner of South Chickies and Prospect Road. Also a potential change of planning use for the State Road Commerce Park parcel on State Road. Sorry, South Chickies and Spooky Nook, thank you. Don't know my roads. Nothing really finalized on the State Road Commerce Park. They're really just kind of talking and feeling things out in terms of what to do with that land parcel next to the 711 that's being currently under construction. Did have a meeting with Hark this last week with West Hemphill to talk about how they can help us with maintenance and programming in the parks. Jeff Book is still looking at that, and will come back to us with some, some more numbers. Also met with Blue Collar to see how they're doing. They are pleased with their relationship with the township and the Recreation Authority. And they're kind of getting their feet under them to start looking at the future. So things are positive there. In terms of the 2022 budget, we will be asking the board to look at signage along Church Street, helping share the cost of that, and resurfacing the rear parking lot of the golf course. There's also another business opportunity at Four Seasons. The Recreation Authority is entertaining business interests in using the barn for golf simulators. They are working on the renovation costs, and will be working closely with the Recreation Authority to develop a lease if the numbers come in where they need them to come in at. And they're hoping that works really well, because they were looking for food and beverage help from Blue Collar. That concludes my report.
On the Greater Centerville South Road project, we have the three properties that we have, to my understanding, acquired.
Yes.
They are a bit of an eyesore as they stand. And I'd like to know if we can get it in the '22 budget and do that lane that we want to do there, and get arranged to have those demolished and get moving on that project.
We did look at that, Perry and I looked at that, and we reached out to the, or JMT, the contractor, the design group. The problem is, we were trying to do it with our forces, just tear them down. The problem is, though, that we also have to take care of asbestos. And, and that then requires someone from the outside coming in. And it, it just didn't make a whole lot of sense for staff to tackle that job. So it's really part of the whole PennDOT project job and part of, of what will happen when those bids are let. So the buildings remain.
Another two years.
Possibly.
Now, with that being a right-of-way expense, is that 100% of our cost to demolish it? Or is that an 80/20?
Perry, do you remember? I, I, is it, is it 80/20?
Is demo 80/20, it's not a right-of-way expense?
I, I think, well, right-of-way is 80/20.
Right-of-way is 80/20 still, too.
Yes. We did reach out to PennDOT. I'd have to check my notes, but I believe they were willing to, willing to allow us to do that, and would, would reimburse us for the cost, because we would have to rent equipment. So, but it would be an 80/20 split. It was, it was a bit, Perry, maybe you can help me here. It was a little bit more than, than we really wanted to get into. But we, we wanted to get away from the property taxes, because we're paying those. And we also, the, the eyesore is we wanted to get rid of.
Is there asbestos in all three properties?
I believe there is.
I, I think there was. There was, there was flooring, there was lead paint. There were, there were quite a few things that they were going to require us to, you know, basically, you have to hire a special company to come in and mitigate that stuff. And once we threw that in with, you know, I, I believe you would probably have to bid that, so you're, you're looking at some higher wages, and with the cost of us tearing the rest of the building down. And I wasn't sure that we, that we got confirmation from PennDOT that they would reimburse us for that. I don't remember that part, but maybe, maybe Cindy is correct, but.
Yeah, we, we did hear from, finally, it took a while.
We have been mowing it and spraying the weeds and, and trying to keep it a minimum, but, you know, the requirement was to board it up, so nobody gets in and out of there. And anytime you board a property up, it, it just doesn't look good, so.
I was almost inclined to go along with Ed until he told me it was part of the 80/20. If it was, if it was one that we are responsible for, then it makes a lot of sense for us to knock it out ahead of the project, because it's a pain to take that, something like that through PennDOT. But PennDOT's paying 80% of the bill. Because I demolished for, we demolished up an extra township, a bi-level radio shack, and there's another building. And we did that with a contractor for $40,000. To demolish something that's about three times the size of one of these houses, so.
JMT did get back to us, and they did tell us also that it would be one of the first tasks done once the contract is let.
Right.
So that also kind of.
When we took, when we demolished the property that we owned on Nistley Road that was inhabited by the golf course manager or the groundskeeper, anyway, did we have this situation? Or didn't we have any hazmat in that area, in that building?
We did not, fortunately.
Okay. Okay. There ought to be a fire there.
Well, our companies are using it. They were, I don't know if they have it ready, but they were planning on using it for rescue.
Okay.
So we got lead paint and asbestos in the buildings?
Yeah.
Crossed our mind.
Any other discussions for the manager? It's the goal of being out here by eight o'clock.
Quick, quick question. State Road northbound, beyond Yellow Goose Road. I note that there's some concrete curbing, designating a right-in, right-out, or a right-in-left-out. Is that for the power company? An access to the transformers down there? Or is that part of the 711?
The one they just created?
The one they just created, yeah.
I think that's the left, I think that's the access point.
They, the PPL will actually, their easement was amended with the revised plan. And I believe that's part of the amendment, is they can use that entrance to get to their substation.
So they're going to, so tractor trailers will be making a left-hand turn there into heading southbound?
Yes.
And that'll give, that'll provide access for the 711 also?
That is correct.
Just one access?
There are two accesses. The issue for tractor trailers is if they're either going north on State Road, going back towards the new Kellogg's building, they cannot make the left-hand turn that's right off of Yellow Goose. They have to go in and use the Kellogg's entrance. They have an access easement to get down to Lot 1 and 3, but they cannot go out that access at Yellow Goose either, because they can't make the turn. The geometry is not sufficient. So they will actually have to go out, so it's a right-out only. They cannot make a left turn out of that access, but they can make a left turn into that.
But coming south, coming southbound on State.
That's correct.
You will allow a left-hand turn there?
That is correct.
Into, by tractor trailer?
Yes.
Okay, but no left turn out?
No left turn, no, of course, no left turn.
No left turn out, so there's no, just left turn in only.
The current line striping, the new line striping does not provide for an additional lane for those left-turn movements.
We did discuss that at the planning group. Township engineer confirmed via the PennDOT plans that we got, that we received from TPD that the line striping is consistent with the HOP plan that we got from TPD.
But it doesn't provide any place for a tractor trailer to come in position till traffic clears and he can make that turn.
That is correct.
That's not, that's what we argued against when we.
There's a center turn lane that goes all the way up to the bridge.
If he's, if it's coming south, it's too, it's too late.
You have to look at it. There's plenty of room there. There's actually a vacant space provided by the line striping, which doesn't really make much sense to me, but there needs to be a designated line, lane, if you're going to bring a tractor trailer there and have him wait until he has a safe turn to the left.
Well, if I may clarify, and that lane that you're coming south from 83 is, it's two lanes. When you get down to the intersection at Yellow Goose, it becomes three. One is a dedicated left-turn lane to go onto Yellow Goose towards Kellogg's.
Right.
There's a dedicated right-turn lane via a yield sign to go Yellow Goose towards Harrisburg Pike. And then there's one lane going south.
Understood.
So that left turn lane, the queuing and the striping is appropriate for.
For, for Yellow Goose, but not for the, not for the turn into the 711.
Yeah.
That's, that's where the center turn lane is.
There isn't, but Ed's, Ed's right. There isn't any there.
It's a broken yellow line on the inside, solid yellow on the outside.
I'm sorry, it is not a correct line striping for what you're describing we're going to allow.
So why don't we?
Give her this to staff and have them come back.
Well, we.
Or, or meet out with staff, like next week.
Mr. LaFever, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mr. Russell to correct me if I'm wrong, since he's a traffic engineer. But PennDOT will not put a brake in the, in the double yellow or solid yellow line for a driveway access. They will only do it for a street.
Then we can't allow that left-turn movement there.
There.
That was our concern when we.
There are left-turn movements across a double yellow line all the time along.
Do you have the line strip, do you have the plan for TPD? Could you put it up on the screen, please?
Guys, can, can I just ask, and for common sense, this, this does not have to be decided tonight. Can we?
It won't be decided tonight.
Right, let's.
But for the record, I, I, okay, now I'm, I'm actually getting a little upset, because we did talk about this. It's built per plan. And what was talked about is, before we overreact, let's see if there's actually a problem. I don't think there's going to be a problem. So, and, and, you know, we're already saying there's going to be a problem. We haven't even seen it operate. What was shown to me, plan-view wise, works, as far as I'm concerned, based off my professional experience. So let's give it a chance to operate, and let's see it actually in operation at this point.
Well, I think, too, to Mr. LaFever's concern, let's show him the plan. Let's meet out with staff out there. And either it is or it isn't built to plan. Either it is or it isn't built to what we were shown.
But we have our engineer who stated it was built to plan. He's looked at the TPD plan.
I understand that, but we're not going to solve it tonight, so.
I'm not disagreeing at this point. But I also don't want it left on the record right now that we have a problem. Okay?
We have a question.
Okay, well, I will entertain the question.
Okay.
I just don't want it left hanging tonight that we have a problem.
And Mr. Beck made a comment that my ears picked up on, that there was an amendment to the plan after it was approved to, I guess, how we got into this was access to PPL's station. But that's the same access that we're talking about for 711. I'm willing to let it stand as a question, and we can dig into it.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, any other discussions on the manager's report? Okay, anything else on the public comments? So does anybody have any public comments to offer at this point? Okay, seeing none, it is 8:07:55, and we will adjourn the meeting.
I'm hurt.
It's all right, I started signing stuff. I didn't get to any of the checks to do for your stamp.
Yeah, I guess, I can, I just need you to just sign that, the YMCA thing in particular, so. I mean, I don't see it drawing being conflict, because I signed stuff for the rec center too. That's if they're a member of the rec, that's a little bit different.
It's a, it's an ordinance, and we need to send it to our planning commission and the county planning commission for comment.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
We are amending the zoning ordinance to address special exception and conditional use in the ordinance.